And going.
It's recording.
All right. And tonight's agenda is available online in the back of the room. The meeting has been publicly posted, is being recorded, and subject to Vermont's open meeting law. Welcome, everybody who's joining us in the room and online. If you're joining us online, keep in mind that the chat function is only for technical issues or difficulties. The city offers online access as a convenience, and we'll continue the meeting if any technical difficulties occur. Please remain muted unless you've been recognized to speak. Raise your hand if you, or signal if you'd like to be recognized. And if you're here in the room, I'll ask that you come forward and speak into the microphone. I'll call in speakers in order, allowing people who haven't spoken yet to speak first, and limiting time if necessary to do the city's business. I'd also ask that you state your name for the record if you do opt to participate in the meeting. If you have any questions about process or procedure, please ask, and we'll get it sorted. And I want to thank everyone in advance for participating in a civil way. Tonight, we're, we have a full council, councillor, councillor Deering, councillor Chambel, councillor Booton, councillor Wazak, councillor Stockwell, and councillor Lozon, and joined by city manager Astrid Castro and clerk treasurer Dawes, as well as our planning commission chair, David Sickle. With that, are there any adjustments to this agenda? All right. Hearing and seeing none, none for you, Nicholas?
No.
All right. Okay. That takes us to visitors and communications. This is an opportunity to talk about anything that's not on tonight's agenda, which would really be anything that's not housing-related. Would anyone like to speak to an item that is not on tonight's agenda? All right. Hearing and seeing none. That takes us to our consent agenda. We have two items. We have approval of the minutes of the regular city council meeting of Tuesday, March 12th, and approval of the city warrants from the week of March 20th, 2024. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion by councillor Stockwell. I'll give the second to councillor Sean Bell. Is, is there, is there any discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it, the motion carries. I'll sign the warrants. And we're not doing any updates or anything, so, okay. Do you have any updates?
Um, just no.
Okay. All right. With that, I thought I'd kick off the discussion with a little bit of table setting. Just put the broader discussion in context, because we've had so many different moving parts and pieces. And I think there's, I have the PowerPoint loaded on there.
I will share it.
And I'll pass out some printouts. So we have four this way, all right? And four this one, one for me.
Thank you.
All right. So I dug out this fun picture. I was looking, I searched my photos for housing in Berry, and this picture came up of me and councillor Stockwell working on the Habitat home on Highland, Highland Avenue. Yeah, that was offered an affordable homeownership opportunity for a family here in Berry. So just as an overview of what this presentation covers before we move into discussion, on the next slide, do I just go next?
It's a PowerPoint, so I think it'll be...
No, it should just, yeah.
Or it's a PDF. There we go. I can close that right there.
All right. There we go. Yeah, so just an overview of what's in this. A little bit on the data, which a lot of us are familiar with, we've heard it. How municipalities tend to shift difficult trends. What we've said are our existing policies and priorities. What's in motion now? We have a lot of active projects in the work, potential opportunities, potential constraints, and then moving into some ideas for new projects and priorities for future council agendas. And I'm gonna have to... Yeah, so I can just press click like this? Oh, no. I'm sorry for that. Yeah. So at any rate, in terms of...
Give the audio on, on the laptop, so we're getting feedback.
Well, in terms of data, we, a lot of this we've seen in multiple reports, and I pulled this from the keys to Berry City proposal from a council working group, the Housing Task Force needs assessment from '22, prepared by David and Jackie Calder. They put a lot of their own time into that. City managers' presentations, the comprehensive municipal plan. But we have a declining population. We're down by 3,000 since our peak. It's been declining for a long time. We have fewer households, smaller households, and less resource households than the city used to have. And we have the second-oldest housing stock in Vermont with some quality challenges, challenges that many of us are familiar with. We have very limited new home starts and often a mismatch of housing needs, like housing stock for downsizing seniors. We have slow grand list growth, decreased non-tax revenue, shifted tax burdens to cover tax stabilization abatements, TIF, and other subsidies like that. We have increasing home prices and rents, decreasing affordability, and risk of displacement of the people who call Berry home as we see new residents arrive. We also have increasing rates of homelessness, and approximately 50 homes, we know, are facing major losses in the July floods. And just, in terms of just visualizing what, you know, a trend line looks like, this is the, you know, the population for the Berry of City since, since 1900. And a lot of the trend lines look like that. And I don't say that to be negative, just to be pragmatic and, and realistic. We know this isn't a new problem, but it is a growing problem, particularly with the flood and COVID migration. And we've seen indicators of economic well-being that have been stressed for several decades. It's frustrated by a lot of things that are outside our control, like we know appraised values are outpacing, or construction costs, rather, are outpacing appraised values. Loans have high interest rates. Lumber material costs have gone up, they've gone stabilized a little bit, but, but inflation has certainly been a factor over the past five years. Labor, limited supply of tradespeople, and, and their laws, like financial regulation affecting who can get a federally-backed mortgage, or zoning regulations determining what gets built where. Council faces, I think, in my view, kind of a long legacy of decisions that have hurt some of our neighborhoods. One of that is street design. I think you notice that along our busiest, most trafficked corridors, that there's a lot of buildings with underinvestment. And, and this, and I think street design is a part of that. We know that urban renewal and demolition, urban renewal demolished a lot of buildings around the city, and demolition continues to occur. I just think of like the, there's the house on Brook Street, there's the garage by Abishan, there's the, the heirs that just turned a building down. We're losing, losing lots of buildings. And if you look at photos of the downtown from 1960s to now, a lot of the wealth, which ran city government and paid for infrastructure, has been torn down. And it, and it's been in small cuts, and if that continues to happen, we're gonna face, we're gonna continue to face tough financial budgets. Code enforcement is an issue that's come up, and more so in recent plans, but I think is, is getting a lot better. And, and for, until recently, we had a lack of long-term capital planning and a lot of financial modeling to get ahead of problems like the recent wastewater treatment plant violations. So what can municipalities do that are looking at tough trends to shift things? Well, we, we control laws and ordinances, we control infrastructure, investment and regulation, and I think I got your front porch in this picture. We, and we can make real estate investments and develop partnerships like we, like we have with Downstreet. We can try to subsidize, to move the private market in particular ways, and communities do that through bonding. They do it through the tax increment of financing bonding, they can stabilize taxes. We have that tool to us because it's in our charter, and we have a policy for it. We can waive fees, like wastewater, wastewater connection fees. We could offer grants if we wanted to build a grant program. We can certainly pull down grants and, and do that, too. And revolving loan funds is something that you see in the community and economic development space, too. We could also offer technical assistance. Like, we know, we know, like, cohousing isn't gonna happen unless somebody's helping walk through a collective of people who want to invest in a, in a building together and put governance structures together. So that, you know, that's something we can do. Always attracting other people's money is, is, expands impact, but municipal impact always has its limits. We're, you know, we're a player of $13 million, and then the colony much, 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 much bigger than that. So we can often try to nudge, but, but transformative things at the local level are difficult. So what are our existing housing policies and priorities? We recently made a minor update to the comprehensive municipal plan, thanks to David and other planning commissioners in 2020. We also adopted unified development regulations in 2020. Those oversee what, where housing can be built by location, type, and dimensions. And we also got through ADU amendments in 2023 to make it a little bit easier for people to build accessory dwelling units to an owner-occupied, single-family home. We have many groups that are just, I mean, doing incredible work throughout the city. There's the Keys to the Berry Housing Working Group that issued a report in 2021. We have the All In for Berry Housing Task Force, of which I'm a member, I know Sam shows up to that. David is a co-chair. We have a homelessness task force. We have a long-term recovery group in Berry Up, focused on construction needs, as council heard. We have a city TIF working group, and we have a Prospects Heights Development Group with the city manager serving as an appointee. We've also had many community conversations, so All In for Berry Community Conversations report in '21. Lots of housing ideas in there. The All In for, All In for Berry Task Force issued a housing needs assessment and recommendation in 2022. Thanks again, David, for doing that. I read it again last night. Really good, lots of good ideas in there, many of which have moved forward. The council adopted a strategic plan, which was overarching just for us as a group, and we adopted a housing plan just, I think, I think three months ago, I think that was a January adoption. Berry Up Community Conversations then rebooted a little, another post-flood conversation with a special focus on housing. And council has approved a north-end flood recovery strategy to look at clusters of buyouts and, and housing redevelopment in the north end for some of those buyout properties. So I just looked at, what are the existing themes? And I read, scanned through all those documents last night, and did this after dinner, so excuse any typos, but I scanned all those documents and tried to think, what are the really consistent themes that we've seen over a long time that residents of Berry City, businesses of Berry City, say they want? And one is to just to grow the grand list, to lessen tax burden and grow our fiscal capacity, to build a variety of housing types that meet Berry's diverse needs, and being open and creative to a lot of different solutions, whether it be home shares, cohousing, boarding houses, supportive housing with services, wraparound services, condos, townhouses, accessory dwelling units. So, and that's what we saw a little bit, too, in the flood outreach, is that the city, there, there's an openness to a wide variety of housing in the city. There's also a desire to have homeownership and equity-building opportunities, that, that this is known as, has been known as a place where you can get a starter home, brought me to Berry. And that's an important thing for a lot, and a lot of our planning documents. And there's been, in a couple plans I have seen mention, of a desire to support owner-occupied rental properties. There's also a desire to improve neighborhood quality, strengthen minimum housing ordinances and code compliance, that's come up in several plans, support affordable housing developers, improve energy efficiency in rehab homes, that goes back to having the second-oldest housing stock in the, in the state of Vermont of any municipality. We have old homes, and many of them are pretty leaky. I remember councillor Wazak telling me, one of his utility bills that he paid as a renter, that was pretty, pretty, pretty exorbitant for a working person. We talked about updating zoning and applying for a neighborhood development area designation. The task force sent this council letter supporting that, and I, and I think the planning commission as well. That's a, both, you know, in the, in the wheelhouse of the planning commission. We've talked about inventorying and mapping, developing opportunities, and, and there's been mention of where those vacant buildings, upper vacant floors, where developable lots or subdivisible lots, ongoing support for those experiencing homelessness, desire to start a housing investment fund with ARPA, whether that be a revolving loan fund, grants, and starting to bank land for development or redevelopment of property, incentives for subdivision and redevelopment of existing infrastructure, and most importantly, since July, minimizing flood impacts to existing and future homes. So just looking back as to what we did three, I wasn't, do we adopt this in January or February? I thought it was January.
Might have been January.
Yeah. So three months ago, we said, this is, this is, these are the plays we want to run as a council. We said stimulate infill development, stimulate housing development, and strengthen existing housing stock. And you can see, again, there's a lot of overlaps with the things we chose to focus on in the near term, with the things that have been long-term priorities for the city. And so what are we, what are we doing right now? What's, what's in the motion? So Ward Five school renovation, nine, nine units, eight of which are gonna be affordable, all nine will be permanently affordable, is underway. Thank you for that, Angie. And, and the council supported that with...
Two hundred and fifty.
Hundred and fifty, or two fifty in ARPA funding. We have unified development regulation amendments underway, which the planning commission chair, David, talked about at last meeting. We have a Habitat for Humanity build in progress on Hill Street. That was a land that we sold in tax sale to, and put up for, put up for interest, Habitat, took it on, and I believe they, I haven't dug on downhill street recently, they demolished that?
Yeah.
Yeah, they demolished it, so. And, and, and getting, getting that underway. They also did some support for home renovations, accessibility modifications, with a special pot of money they had in the Blackwell Street neighborhood. There are TIF plan amendment preparations that are being considered by our TIF working group, which David Sickle also sits on, with the manager and Carol and Mark Nichols and...
Mark Nicholson, yeah.
And MA Green. And MA Green. So we have an interest in the Seminary Street lot that we put up for a 30-unit development downtown with EverNorth DW Construction on Wells and Downs, Downstreet. You're filling in my blanks. You could tell when I'm like, searching. We have a letter of interest out for the Wabi Park Housing Development over by the Public Safety Building. We have Prospect Heights Northern Borders Regional Commission app headed to that federal agency. We have Berry Up Construction Assistance gearing up with a construction or project manager. We have the Homes for All that are participating in the, there, the task force is participating in the Homes for All toolkit, and, which is a state project. And then we have clustered river buyouts and housing development vision in the north end that this council has said it wants to pursue. So we have a lot of potential opportunities. We have federal funding, though that may be a little uncertain with Congress as it is right now. Northern Borders funding for due diligence at Prospect Heights. We have new investors coming to the table to, to partner with us in downtown homes. We have unspent local ARPA funds. We have TIF plan amendments and some bonding capacity that we need to make the most of. I think councillor Lozon mentioned that in suggesting that we have this meeting tonight. And then there's just these, like, these market shifts, COVID, teleworking, political migration, whether that's whether you're moving to Vermont because you want more liberties for gun ownership or bodily autonomy, Vermont seems to be attracting to people, and from out-of-state, and it's shifting the real estate market. Are there other potential opportunities that, you know, people see on the horizon?
I do. Nicholas, you have, you have the email that I sent.
Yeah.
Happy to share with the council. And this is good stuff, Jake, thank you.
Oh, I'm not done yet.
It, you know, but we all know, I mean, right now, the biggest impediment, I've been thinking about this a lot, to building is, and Angie, you know this, it's cost.
Oh, well, that's the next slide. That's constraints.
The cost is, and until we can figure out a meaningful way to sort of drive those costs down, I just don't see any significant development. I think I might have, might have one more, sorry, if anybody needs another one. And Nicholas, if you want to bring, I mean, you can bring the model up on the screen that was in the email that I sent.
It sounds like, it sounds like maybe this, this is an idea, and what I'm gonna do is pivot to...
Right, that sort of, oh, okay. It wasn't time for ideas yet.
No, we're not quite there yet, but...
Oh, I thought that was the question.
Get these circulated around. So there are constraints, as you mentioned, Tom, costs, and that's what I talked about, lumber labor materials lending.
Yep.
And, and the appraisal gaps. But we also have constraints in terms of staff capacity and how much, how many projects we can run. Our city revenues are down, our expenses are up. I don't think that's gonna change in the next few years. And, and we got a, we got, thankfully, got some relief from the state, but that's gonna be a million-dollar gap in next year's budget. We have state revenues down, too. Things are, things are looking tight compared to the COVID era influx. Our volunteer capacity has its limits. We have congressional gridlock, and sometimes we have council gridlock. And, 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 and our commitment to implement plans and follow through has, has been, you know, I think we get sometimes, sometimes a B, sometimes a C there when I look through some of the old plans and see how many have been implemented, even going back to the Vermont economic resilience issue. A lot of things got implemented, but, you know, a lot of things, a lot of things didn't, were left on the table. So in terms of new project and priorities, you know, there's obviously no shortage of new ideas, and we can continue to throw things on the wall. But I think, you know, if we're gonna start, you know, honing in on what's the lowest cost, biggest impact, I was thinking we, maybe we should think about what criteria we're gonna use to start identifying what's worth pursuing and what's not. I mean, and these are some of the things I think we could ask. Is it a project that's gonna deliver net grand list growth over the next 10, 20, 30 years? When's the grand list growth gonna hit? How much are we subsidizing per dwelling unit? What's the total cost of the subsidy? Not all subsidies have the same cost, there's a time cost of money, bonds have different costs in tax stabilization. Who's gonna pay for the subsidy? I would always say, you know, use federal money first, then state, then city, but obviously fed money comes with a lot of strings and, but these are some of the criteria that I think we should be thinking about, timeline. The reason I focused on downtown parking, parking lot housing so much is because, to me, that was the fastest, lowest barrier way to get units in the near term. And that's what I, I think, that's what I think we need to do, is get to certificates of occupancy for new housing as fast as we can. I'd also, I'm also interested in direct assistance to local flood-impacted families that have been identified, people who want to stay in Berry, who may be looking for our need and looking for a home here. How can we connect them with a housing opportunity? And then thinking about what opportunities leverage the most amount of other people's money, outside money. And last, I think homeownership creation is something that just continues to be really important to our constituents as, as equity and home building, our homeownership opportunities shrink. Are there any other criteria, like what type of criteria, other criteria, do you think we could use to evaluate if a project's a good idea and one that we want to run?
I think if it's inclusionary, if it offers some opportunities for people who are low to moderate income, but also some opportunities for people who are, who are more financially secure, so that we don't create a separate...
So like a percent affordability?
Yeah.
Yeah. Are there other criteria that you think, like, when you think about housing projects that you want to support, what are the aspects that suggest to you that's a good project, that really delivers for my constituents, that delivers on Berry City goals?
Well, you know, when we talk about city subsidy per unit, do we have money? I mean, as far as I'm concerned, any, any project that, any housing project is a good housing project, obviously if it's reasonable, if it's done by a responsible developer, if they're well-funded. We have a serious, we have a serious grand list problem. And without some sort of direct, I mean, let's face it, we do not have the funds to subsidize any projects that I'm aware of. We're looking at a grand list and revenue going backwards. So, you know, I think what we have to do is be realistic about where we are, take stock of where we are, and obviously, we're gonna need assistance from the state and federal governments. And this is not something Berry can do on its own in the short term, not at all.
Just to summarize that, projects that attract state and federal funds and real developer, experienced, I should say, experienced developers, state and federal funds. Yeah. There was another idea, yeah, well, that you said, so just acknowledging that how cost-constrained we are. But we do give up a lot of foregone revenue, like when we stabilize taxes or we do a TIF, that's essentially giving up future revenues.
Yep.
To pay back, to pay a subsidy to a private developer for a project that wouldn't happen without that subsidy, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah. Anything else? Any other things, councillor Deering? Oh, councillor Stockwell?
Homeownership opportunities, whether it's a duplex or, or co-op, that, that would be up there. And that's what we heard time and time again from residents, that they want homeownership opportunities. And I would say also that it uses, that it's part of a citywide plan that uses good principles of urban design, so we don't end up with a building stuck somewhere that's not integrated, doesn't have good infrastructure, there's not easy access to the downtown, that it really needs to be planned. And we have this opportunity to plan in ways that incorporate far larger hunk of the city than most people ever get an opportunity to do. It happened because of a disaster, but then we can look at, will this, will these sidewalks work? Are there enough green spaces? Will this be a pleasant place for people to live? And we'll, we'll encourage people to connect with each other, so that people don't become isolated.
Well, nothing, none of this is set in stone, but something you can, we can continue to cogitate on, but I think, you know, if we are gonna start adding things to the, the to-do list, and, and the to-do list gets a little too long, then you have to think about, okay, which, what's really the priority? Because when everything's a priority, nothing's a priority. So, so we have, I thought we had a really good, in January, had a pretty good playbook. But if we have, you know, new ideas that we want to think about, I think, I, I would suggest that we start to run it through, do the math, always do the math, run it through what's gonna deliver the most. And I, one other thing that just councillor Lozon, you triggered for me, is thinking about experienced developers, but also experienced project managers. When we're talking about big buildings, anything over, you know, anything over really, well, I'm gonna throw a number that I'll probably regret, but like, 20, 30 units, needs a lot of property management experience, and there's only so many of those types of developers that have that type of experience. So I just, oh, I'm putting the wrong thing. I, I'm getting tricked by that IMAX. So I just threw out some, you know, brainstorms to get this going, and I know, this looks like councillor Lozon, you have another one. I'll just run through these, we don't have to talk about each one. It's just to get the, since we're having a discussion tonight about housing and new projects, priorities, ideas, these are some of mine. I think we should ask staff to identify the next three lowest-used city-owned parking lots for additional housing development.
Very much agree with that one.
I would put out an open call for any residents that may be interested in subdivision or housing development for potential real estate purchase leads. I'd request that the planning commission begin meeting twice a month to speed up some of the projects on their table, including zoning amendments, amendments to the flood hazard, to align with state best practice, which, Tom, you mentioned last week. Pursue an application for neighborhood development and provide council just monthly updates, either, even if it's just a written note on what, how things are moving along. I'd commit $250,000 of ARPA funds, and this is already in our, mentioned in our council adopted strategy from January, not that amount, but that we commit some funding to establish Housing Trust Fund. That takes a lot of thinking, and I think the Housing Task Force would be a good, good resource if they're willing to take it on to develop some governance structure ideas for a steering committee, how that fund could be used, and think about potential revenue sources to sustain the fund. We've, we've, we could consider a vacancy tax, we could consider annual licensure fees for short-term rentals. I think those are, those are some things that we could look at to keep that housing money recycling and going back into the economy. I also say, let's talk to the HCB, the Vermont Housing Conservation Board, and ask if they could support any shared equity infill homeownership in the city. What would they need from us? What money do they have, or any money really, that they could invest in the city? What would they need from us? What money do they have, or any money really, that they could invest in the city? I'd look at doing a subdivision and lot purchase programs for landowners interested in subdivision of eligible lots of at least fifth acre in size. And I say that because that's kind of, that's the new marker for, for density of allowed housing uses. And, and I think we can do that on existing infrastructure and use a program like that to bake land for redevelopment partners. I just pulled this map here from the municipal plan and it, you can't see the key, but red is downtown, green is, green is kind of open space. Yellow is infill opportunities and I'm not, I'm not sure what, oh, blue is constrained. And you can see like areas like on Nelson Street, Tom, in your neighborhood, huge lots, many of which could be subdivided and welcome new homes, but also in Ward Three and Ward Two, there's lots all over the city. I think we should lobby for tax incentives for owner occupied rental properties and look at the tax, the property tax code and see, is there a way to reward owner occupancy? And two more ideas, or a few more ideas to get the juice flowing. Support the Housing Task Force in helping local small-scale developers join the Homes For All cohort, the training cohort. Budget for Permanent Housing Community and Economic Development Position in City Hall. I'd request monthly updates to the TIF working group in conjunction with the 10-year financial forecasting of the city's grand list and budget. So we have a better picture of where we're headed. An action group to prepare updates to our minimum housing standards ordinance and required disclosure of operational energy costs and efficiency. And that's when heat's not included in rent. Let the renter know what it's going to cost to operate that building. And to begin working on just cause eviction provisions. And an action group to evaluate land value taxation to increase revenues from land values such as parking lots, vacant lots. That's something Representative Anthony mentioned when he was doing his legislative update. Instead of putting most of the taxable value on improvements, you do it on the underlying land, which creates an incentive to develop vacant lands.
Actually, what his proposal was for was to tax the land under tax exempt properties. So.
Oh, no, he talked about that too, but he also talked about the taxation, but like taxing the nonprofit, like the nonprofits.
Right, right, and taxing them, creating a, a tax, doing a charter change to create a tax that would impose, like, just tax on the land or something along those lines. And it was approved once and then overturned. So it's.
Yeah. Yeah, and I wouldn't put that in a, necessarily in a housing bucket, but, but it's a revenue bucket.
It's a potential revenue, yeah.
So those are, those are some ideas, so if we're thinking about redoing our strategy, are there other, other ideas?
Ideas? Buy down the cost, because you can do all of these things. The biggest impediment to development right now is cost, period. So until we, so that's exactly what I'm doing there is, so I reached out last week, Nicholas is aware of this. Wrote a letter to our delegation. I think many of you probably have a copy of it. It was forwarded by them. Interesting response. I sent the email out, rather lengthy email, just talking about how I feel about Berry at this point in time. How concerned I am, how many of our homes on the North End and other areas are, you know, we're, we're indeed. You know, the, the loss of grand list value, the abatements, not only the, the appropriate abatements that we've done and the ones that we're poised to do on the 20th, another, what, Carol, 20 or so?
Yeah, about 20 of them are flood related.
Yeah, we were absolutely one of the hardest hit communities in central Vermont, Vermont for that matter, during the two flooding events. Thankfully, we weren't, we were kind of spared in December. So what I, so I went on in the email, but what I essentially asked for with acknowledgement of the 2023 flooding event and additional two-year extension on our downtown TIF district. Because even though I was successful in lobbying for an extension last year, it's, it's just not going to cut it, not after the flood. An amendment of Berry's TIF district so that we could not only have a TIF district, but also effect property tax stabilization agreements within our TIF district. This is, it's kind of Berry specific, but I'm not a city councillor anywhere else. Creation of an additional TIF district on Berry's North End that would essentially go from Beckley to Fifth on both sides of Route 302. And then lastly, the creation of a tax anticipation housing grant program that would support the development of workforce and missing middle housing. I think everybody recognized the first three. The last one, the tax anticipation housing grant program, that was something, and I don't know if you have it, Nicholas, it, I'll forward it to all of you. But it's a program that would upfront property taxes for, depending on the size of the development, either a five or a 10-year period. I don't know if you, if all of you are familiar with the governor's five-year freeze program.
Really, really affect our revenues, wouldn't it?
It, would it affect our revenues? You know?
Well, when you freeze property taxes for five years.
Pre-July, I might have been sitting there saying the same thing. But the only reason development is not happening in Berry City and everywhere else is cost. $375,000 to create a two-bedroom apartment. So you're smart people. I mean, we can all do math. So think of a $375,000 house. An apartment works the same way. You have to pay property taxes. You have to pay insurance. You have to pay a mortgage. So imagine a $375,000 house and tell me how, how in this current environment, how do we make, how do we make that affordable for people?
Yeah, I think it's a good question. It's just who pays and what you're asking is.
What's that?
It's a good question. What you're asking is that who pays and who pays for it is all the other taxpayers.
The but for, I think I'm pretty comfortable saying that without some sort of advantage, and I've seen this for decades. When you look at a developer and you say, would you like to develop a building in Berry City? And comparatively, you can develop a building in a community like Montpelier or a, or a community like Burlington where the per capita income is higher. The cost is relatively the same. Building costs are no, they're no greater or lesser, you know, just because you go to Chittenden County, there's no magic wand. It's $375,000 a unit, whether you're doing it in Montpelier, Berry, or Burlington. So naturally, developers are going to look at a community and they're going to say, well, their per capita income is higher. I feel, I feel more confident that people are going to be able to afford that rent in a county or in a city that has a higher per capita income. It's reasonable. So, so what I asked for, so I put this program together and, yeah, some could easily argue, interestingly, that's not what the governor is saying with this five-year freeze. He's saying what I'm saying is I look at it as an investment in our future. You're not asking, you're not asking other taxpayers to pay for anything. Are you foregoing revenue for a significant period of time? Yes, you are. But they're paying for their water and sewer. The city isn't going backwards. And what you're able to do is you're able to buy down those costs. So, I mean, I'll ask each of you this simple question. If you could wave a magic wand and have 75 units of housing in Berry right now. But, but the catch is the property taxes don't get collected for 10 years. It takes 10 years for the city to grow its grand list. But over that 10-year period, you get 75 units of housing, maybe some of our employers will benefit. Maybe we'd collect some sales tax revenue. Maybe we'd have more students in our schools. Would you make that trade? Couple of years ago, I might have said, no, nope, I want the money. Not today, because we are at such a disadvantage and couple that with the grand lists that we're losing now. If we don't do something like this to give Berry City and, and other communities like Berry, you know, we're not Chittenden County, we're not Stowe. But I'm proud of who we are. And until we come up with a program like this, and the cool thing about this program, it could work for a young couple. The young couple, exactly what you were saying, Jake. They want to do infill development. They want to build a duplex. It's $500,000 to build a duplex right now. So if that young couple said, we want to build a duplex somewhere in Berry, oh, by the way, they couldn't do it on Nelson Street, it's way too wet up there. The land looks nice, but it's really wet. Just drive down and try not to skid past the intersection when you go by Oliver's house from all the water washing across the road. But if a young couple said, we want to build a duplex, we could provide them, we, this program could provide them with $50,000, 10% of the overall building cost. That's significant enough to make a difference. That will move the needle. And that would make a young couple say, you know what? If I can have $50,000 upfront to build in Berry City and do, do a duplex, my folks live on one side, we live on the other side, I'll do that in Berry City. If a developer could build a $5 million building and get $500,000 upfront, that's enough of a difference to move the needle. You know, that would work. So this is what, it was interesting. I sent this email on the 13th. I did copy Senator Rahm Hinsdale. I copied, sent it to all of our delegation. I also copied Joan Goldstein. I sent this email at 3:30 on the 13th. At 8:00 AM on the 14th, the governor called me and said he had seen it. I don't know how he saw the email that fast, but I suspect Commissioner Goldstein put it in his evening reading. And he liked the idea and he said, it's something, if, if we can find the support, it's something that the administration would like to take a look at. Because it's very similar to the governor's five-year freeze program that it, it just gives, like I said, it gives communities, and maybe it's not just Berry or unique to Berry. Maybe it's looking at those communities where, okay, perhaps the per capita income is a little lower than it is in Montpelier or Stowe or other areas. And you're giving, saying to those communities, we're going to give you a competitive advantage in the marketplace. Because with building costs being so high, we just don't have a chance. I mean, how many of you were surprised? We had one respondent and, and Angie, thank you for responding. But honest God, when, when you're literally giving away city land, and we had one respondent, that was surprising to me. I was really surprised that there weren't two or three. And as I look into it and as I talk with other developers, it is cost. Now, Jake, these are all great ideas. I like them all. But, but our, the biggest impediment right now is not permitting, okay? Act 250 is annoying at times, but it's not the biggest impediment. The biggest impediment is cost. And until we can get ourselves some sort of cost advantage or some sort of program that buys down those upfront costs, I'm just really concerned that we're not going to be able to affect, you know, meaningful development. We're not going to be able to build the number of housing units that we really need.
Tom, would you, if there were other people's money available instead of using our own money, would you go for that first?
Oh, if there were other people, I, I don't know, I don't know how you do, if there were, yeah, I mean, think of one. I'm all ears.
Vermont Housing Improvement Program offers a $50,000.
For what now?
Vermont Housing Improvement Program offers a $50,000 subsidy, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, but that's for existing buildings, not for new housing stock.
Well, it's for unit creation, yeah.
So, yeah, it's a great program, but even that program has its limitations. I mean, we just, in my opinion, we need more tools in our toolbox. We need to be innovative. We need to think outside the box and we need to, you know, I don't believe, like I just said. If, if you said to the city of Berry, you're going to collect 100,000, and you agree with the developer upfront, that's the premise behind this plan. The developer and the city agree, the assessed value is going to be X, you know, throw a number out, $3 million. Your property taxes are going to be, you know, $100,000 a year. And the city simply agrees that we will forego the collection of that $100,000 a year for a 10-year period. We will help you buy down. But as part of that application process, you have to show us that you're just not taking more profit. That our investment has to turn into, has to translate to the lowest rep possible for the occupants of that building. We'll see.
Let's, let's play this out.
You know, everybody said crossover. Crossover is a brick wall.
Well, Tom, let's play this out. So we're, let's, we're, let's say this council's, I'm not going to be here, but this council is, is going to be talking about a budget in another fall, right? You're going to have a million dollar budget gap. You're going to have double-digit increases to healthcare. You're going to have fixed union obligation costs. And then you're going to have a proposal that cuts.
Did not cut. Don't say it.
It's not, so you're saying it's not going to, forgoes future revenue.
Defers, that's the word I like.
Okay, defers future revenue, although, you know, we're not necessarily to still stand still because there's, you know, more population, there's often more service costs, service demands. Is that something that, that's something I ask you, those of you who will be here on council, is like, are you willing to forego revenue at that point? Boy, so many. Who was first? Okay, Councilor Dearing.
So to me, I think that it would be important to utilize being able to kind of have a down payment on our future. To have 45 units online, to have people spending money in our community, working in our community, having that in our economy. I think that for the city to not see those revenues would be okay, because we're not seeing the revenues as it is. So if we can build housing for people and not see those costs, and then in 10 years, boom, here's a set of money that you didn't expect to have. I mean, we're going to expect to have it, but it's money that we didn't have before. So if we can work to buy down some of those initial costs, and I know that many of the people that I talked to, Sam's one of them, you know, talks about costs and how expensive it is to build or to rebuild. So if we can do something to help buy down those costs, I'm in.
Who's that? Councilor Boone?
They actually had their hand up first.
All right, better I, well.
All right. I'm, I'm, I'm not interested in the tax stabilization piece. I, you know, I'm fine with using, we talked earlier about a potential revolving loan fund, using $250,000 worth of ARPA money. We have another million plus of ARPA money on top of that. So if we want to talk about helping, you know, developers, if we want to talk about helping get projects off the ground, that's fine. But I think one of the reasons we're in the situation that we're in is because I've, I've never liked these tax stabilization agreements. And with the general, with the grand list, not the general fund, wrong building, with the grand list in the condition it is right now, I don't think foregoing any revenue is in the long-term interest of the city. But I'm all for, if we can find a way to get money to developers, to that young couple who wants to build a duplex for their parents. Let's do that, but let's do it without foregoing.
Councilor Boone, and then Councilor Stockwell.
Councilor Stockwell, have your hand up first.
Okay. It just seems potentially dangerous to me and I wouldn't be interested unless we had some scenario A, scenario B, scenario C. It just seems dangerous in a city where we're already, we don't have enough money, we won't have enough money. It's, it seems like a pretty dangerous idea. I, I do like the idea of having a housing, a housing fund, a revolving loan fund. I think, and I would love to especially support small developers in developing more in the city.
You ready, Councilor Boone? Yeah. All right, so scenario A, we put a bid out there, or put an RFP out there for, or a letter of interest for a huge development in the middle of our downtown. We get three bidders that come back, one that's local, one that's from Burlington, and I can't remember the other one. And we put a $8 million building, is it $8 million? How much is that in tax revenue?
I don't know.
Like 300, I think it's like 300,000, somewhere around there annually. That was tax stabilization. Just for, for those that know, that's City Place. That made a huge difference. That building did not flood. As a side note, because it was above the flood plain. But that's not the only thing it did. It also brought those other developers.
I was going to interrupt you, but, yeah, I oppose this bill on the premise that I am a.
Wait out, we're getting, what's going on here?
I have an addiction to underage kids. I like to rape.
Oh, 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 okay. We got trouble, 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 right here in River City.
Look, it's Zach on my phone.
That's really unfortunate. Also brought the developers that fixed up the Blanchard block, which for those that didn't live here at the time, that was not a very good building looking inside. If you went through, it was, it was pretty bad. And you go in there now and it's, it's gorgeous. How much, I don't know how much that is in grand value, grand list value, but.
Taxes? 300,000.
300,000?
A year.
A year and taxes.
Yeah, but it took a while to get there. We had to invest in our future.
It took 10 years, but man, it doesn't. It took 10 years, but man, it doesn't, it goes pretty quickly in municipal government, 10 years does. You know, and also brought something else to Berry because of the interest of, you know, all the development. We ended up with Summer Street Apartments. I think that you could connect those together. You know, and I think that, granted, you guys didn't get a tax stabilization, but, you know, it's, tax stabilization programs do work. They drive interest in the city. You know, I.
That's music to Angie's ears.
Careful now. Yeah, I think that, I don't have a problem with, you know, investing in the future. I'll say this, $300,000 for Blanchard, and I think it's $300,000, $400,000 for City Place. And what was at City Place before was a vacant lot. And we discussed, there was many discussions about it, but that building is beautiful.
Can I respond to something Councilor Stockwell said? Because I don't know if she fully understands the program. I don't understand how anyone could call it dangerous. So the way the program would work, the city and the developer would get together and they would agree the value of your property when it's fully constructed is going to be X. So again, let's say that that X results in $100,000 a year in property taxes. VITA would upfront the money to the developer. The city would collect the property taxes. And that money, that property tax revenue, they'd collect it, but it would have to go to VITA to pay down those upfront costs. So I'm not sure what's dangerous about that. I mean, one might think, well, what if they don't pay their property taxes? Well, then guess what? Carol, what happens when somebody doesn't pay their property taxes?
They go to tax sale.
And is the bank in front of us or behind us?
They're behind us.
There you go. It's bulletproof. It's not dangerous.
Forgoing tax revenue without a projection of our budget, I think is dangerous.
Not doing something is dangerous.
So to, just to, further back and forth, I see Councilor Chambel.
I, I'm pretty uneasy with this idea, and I can see how it could work, but I don't know if it could work right now when we are so far down. That's the big worry. And maybe, you know, maybe City Place and Blanchard Block were at a different time where there was more of a grand list to cover, to cover. But right now, we're, we're down.
I think one of the things that sticks out to me is like, I think, you know, there's just potentially some merit here, but I wouldn't explore it until we know other fundings off the table. I know that, you know, the governor came here and said he was going to bring many millions of dollars to Berry. I'd love to see if any of that's going to come to fruition through our friend Pat Moulton. And only do this as a very absolute last resort in a pretty targeted way would be my inclination. It goes back to, how are we going to evaluate things? What's the criteria that we're going to use? And I think that's maybe when we think about these on future, as future agenda items that are properly warned and packaged, then we can, we can start to evaluate them through some priority lenses. Councilor Wazak.
Yeah, I mean, the only thing that I don't like about this is the tax stabilization. So I'm wondering if there's a way, something Sam mentioned, or I don't remember what it was, but something mentioned made me think, what if we still do the grant program, but tie forgiveness of it to, so like, hey, we'll give you 50, $75,000 to help you with the upfront costs. That'll be a loan to the city, but if you generate X amount of grant list value, that loan is then forgiven, and through that process, we would, you know, know that that loan would be forgiven.
Well, I mean, there's flexibility built into the plan. So you don't have to, it's not a question of all or nothing. But the reason that I've gone to the legislature and to the administration, we have a form of this tool now, you know, in terms of property tax stabilization, but we don't upfront the costs. Cost, and there's no one, you know, we can all talk about it and talk about it and talk about it. Is there anyone in this room who thinks that building costs are not the single biggest impediment to building? Anyone? So guess what? You can talk about all these programs all you want. Until you figure out a way to drive upfront costs down, you're not going to be successful. And I don't like the, and I don't like the, I don't want to give up revenue for 10 years. I don't see any other way to do it. And if someone has a better idea, I'm all over it, truly.
Well, and that's, I think that's what other people are saying, that they have other ideas that don't involve.
Let's hear them.
Giving up a future, future.
Let's hear them.
I just pitched you.
Councilor Wazak just pitched one.
So with a program like this, I'm saying it would be another tool in the city's tool belt. So when you talk about evaluation, you don't have to do any of it. You could affect this program tomorrow, and if this council doesn't say yes, if we don't have a project in front of us, well, we don't have to say yes. If we have a project in front of us, we could say no. We don't like your project. We don't like what it does for the city. But right now, we don't have this tool in front of us. We need, believe me, we're Berry City. We need all the tools we can get right now.
So I think, you know, this is obviously a night to put ideas on the table and bring them back in, before a council, and maybe get a little bit of a straw poll on who wants to go what directions. I'll just say, I am strongly against tax stabilization within the TIF district because it undermines the purpose of the TIF district. The TIF district is to pay back bonds using the incremental increase in property value from the point at which the TIF district began. And then if you start stabilizing taxes at the same time, you limit your ability to pay back the debt that you've taken on. It's getting, it gets a little too double-dipping for me. But TIF extension, sounds great. But not, not tax stabilization within a TIF district. And I, and I, and I do think we have to think about, you know, what, where are we going to get the biggest bang for our buck? Lobbying-wise, and, and maybe, maybe advisors who are in the State House and who follow this would know, is it a good idea to push for another district? Maybe. But is it going to be a huge, huge lift, and we're going to spend a lot of time doing it and not get anywhere?
I don't want anything from you.
That's one thing I would like to look at, just to see some, maybe from Leonine, what their perspective would be on, on that play. So Bern Rose, you have your hands up.
Hi, thank you. I just really appreciate that we're having a discussion about this and all of these options. I appreciate the work, Tom, that you've been doing. I know that you have a lot at stake, and I think we all have a lot at stake. I really like that. Last week, when you said you wanted to meet every other week to just talk about housing, that I know we need to act, and we need to act soon. But I like that people are going to be able to go home and chew on these things and look into them and find out more. And the more we talk about it, and the more we share with our neighbors and our community, more ideas will come out of it. One of the things I have a problem with is assuming that everything has to be really expensive. And we know that there are different kinds of housing options. We know that buildings are expensive. I just know we did some repairs, and I know how much they cost. So can we do more support in our city of apartment developments? We have a lot of old houses where people have been making that kind of mother-in-law or grandmother apartment, as we've allowed that because of a move by city council that opened up that restriction. We have empty buildings downtown. I heard somebody mention some kind of an empty, oh, no, I hear it was somebody else who said, an empty buildings tax. Are there places that we have that we can invest in? And City Place and the Blanchard Block are commercial buildings. And I think right now, what we're talking about is housing. And so I think looking at our, our housing stock, and how are we going to build new housing, may look a little different than building something for commercial purposes and then filling that up. We know we don't have a problem with filling up housing. But I appreciate your work, Councilor Lozon, and bringing all of these ideas. And I appreciate Mayor Hemrick, the presentation that you gave about where we are and what we have going on. And as a person in this community, I'd like to be able to think about some of these things and explore them a little bit and hear some more. So thank you all for this really hard work. It's important work and necessary, and you're all doing really great stuff. And I hope that you can listen to each other also. Thank you.
Thanks, Bern. Councilor Boone.
Yeah, Bern, thank you for the comment about. The reason why I brought up the Blanchard Block and the City Place building is because it's basically what is being presented, right, for a conversation? We forego revenue on it. That's the reason why. You know, and I, and I look at all this stuff here, and I think to myself, let's just do it all. And, you know, support everything that comes before. And that's just my thought process. It doesn't have to be, you know, no, we're not doing that because we're doing this. I think it can be done each, you know, that's my thought process.
David Sickle. Thank you. Just some observations. I'm David Sickle. I'm the Chair of the Planning Commission. I'm on the Housing Task Force. I'm kind of listening to discussion and hearing, you know, a big impediment is the cost of new housing. And I'm hearing three different ways you can provide some subsidy for that. One is grant money. That's how down-street housing develops, is they get federal money that helps offset the cost. Another is tax anticipation notes. Can borrow money, give incentives upfront, and then pay the money back with, with increased tax revenue that's expected. And another is to do some kind of tax abatement upfront. And there are all different sides of the same coin, if there's a coin with three different sides on it. But the point is, there's got to be money from somewhere to, to get the ball rolling. Because if, if, if the cost wasn't the impediment, then we wouldn't be sitting here having this discussion because those up, those second floors on downtown would be developed and be apartments. They're not, because the cost of doing that is more than the rent that they could collect supports. There are vacant lots in Berry that are for sale that don't have houses going up on. Hasn't been a lot of private development in Berry without, again, without some outside money. So I guess saying, no matter how you look at it, there's different ways to get to the funding upfront, but they're all, they're all just different ways of looking at it. So I guess I'm kind of saying everybody at the table's right.
So you should be a politician.
I was going to say.
Amy Gelford.
Hi, I just dotted down a few reactions to some things that you guys were, were going through. From my day job, I live and breathe a state revolving loan program. And I keep hearing that thrown out. I would be very careful about counting on that. It takes a lot of people, and it's really complicated to run. I know what you're talking about would be a different scale than what I deal with in a state program. But just the number of different expertise it takes. People who understand the engineering, people who understand the legal and financial stuff. Like, there's just like so many levels of expertise needed. And so, you know, in terms of hitting the, we don't have city staff who are twiddling their thumbs who could take that on. And so then are they managing contracts with other people to manage a revolving loan fund? And that cuts into the benefit you can get out of that. So I would just be very cautious. I know there are some other municipalities in Vermont that do run some sort of revolving loan programs. So, you know, maybe find out where those are, maybe talk to the LCT or somebody, and find out where those are and make sure it's feasible. You know, if you're, you know, throwing out a chunk of the ARPA money to capitalize that and working from that, you know, I just think, I have an old house that had some rain damage last summer, but not flood damage. You know, it just compounded things I already needed to do, the fact that I own a 110-year-old, 110-year-old house. You know, so I need tens of thousands of dollars just for my house. So how many homes would you actually be able to help with a revolving program? You'd kind of be picking, I don't know, 10 houses in the city. So 10 people end up better off. It goes into, they're helping them financially and not their neighbors. So I'd be really wary of that. If you end up helping a small number of people and not helping other people, to me, that's an equity issue and just the work on it. I know I've made this plug before, like when the school renovations to housing were coming up, like I'm wary of putting money into particular housing, even nonprofits, if it means we have less money to spend on other infrastructure, because the infrastructure supports everybody's housing. And if I was a developer, and there's some neighborhoods in Berry, like, my street is falling apart. And I know it's not the highest priority. We're a dead-end street. It's, it's not a big deal. But, you know, if I was trying to look at the value of my house, and if I tried to sell it, there would be some people who would drive down the street, and they wouldn't even look at the house because the road's in such a bad shape. So I think, you know, talking about the housing box versus the other city infrastructure box, I know the focus has got to be on housing, but it fits into, it fits into other things. And the infrastructure, you've got to do anyway, and the city owns that. That's everybody's, we've all got to share in that cost anyway, so it doesn't get into kind of the winners and losers as much. One thing I didn't, I heard vacant lots a couple times, but I didn't hear vacant houses. There's a house two streets over from me that's been vacant for five years. I don't think there's been anybody in it. There's probably some skunks and woodchucks in it. I have no idea if there's water in the basement in it. So what's happening with the vacant housing list? And I know that the city doesn't own those. But you have a list of those, and what's the holdup there? Is it, is it an estate property that just like, whatever, somebody can afford to pay the property taxes on it, and they're letting it compost? You know, like, the value of those houses, if nobody's maintaining them, is going to go down over time, right? Those are going to fall into place. And, you know, the one I'm thinking of, it's, it's in the North End. It's a couple streets over where maybe some people could move into that house and renovate that if it's not feasible for them to renovate their house that was flooded. So I would just, you know, in the, it's going to be a million tiny solutions, but are there five vacant houses that somehow the city can find a way to nudge those? Because some of them are going to fall apart on their own, and they're probably a hazard for the fire department and code enforcement anyway. On the flip side, I would say, for the ones who, you know, I thought it was really important when Councilor Lozon brought up the issue of, what's the threshold for, like, having to move your utilities up from the basement? That's going to affect a lot of people in the North End. And you might have people who otherwise were not planning on leaving, and that's going to be, you know, that's what's going to evict them from living in Berry, is they're not going to want to spend that money or re-spend that money that they already spent on their utilities. So if there are ways where someone can stay in their home, I think we, you know, that's one way to tackle that list of properties that we might lose off the grand list, is can we find ways to keep people in their own homes and it not be just based on some dollar threshold? You know, I think with like the vacant house issue, you know, you were asking about, what would be the evaluation criteria? And to me, one of them is, what's something you can do that fixes multiple problems? To me, a vacant house is a problem for the city already, right? So turning a vacant house into a house where someone can live, you're fixing two problems. You're fixing a nuisance that the fire department and the police department has to watch out for. And you're potentially growing the grand list, and it's, may not be as expensive as new construction. Or even if, even if it, you know, that's the case for infill. It's not a vacant lot, but that. You know, a few years ago, I don't know, time has been almost strange last year, but you increased the cost of permit fees as a council, and that probably made sense at the time. But did that send a message about how much it costs to, you know, coming in and formally doing, doing the right kind of permitting that people should do? I had the personal experience, when I bought my house, I spent less than $1,000 on electrical work. I did the required smoke alarm upgrades. I switched a couple outlets to GFCIs, where they're in places where they were going to be wet. And I took out the last piece of knob and tube wiring. So this was like minimal compliance stuff, under $1,000 worth of electrical work. But, you know, I hired Dexter Electric to do it. So they pulled a permit because they're a legitimate electrician. That, less than $1,000, I want to say it was more like $700 or $800 of work, and the fact that they pulled a permit was the basis on which my assessment on my house was increased from $89,000 to $133,000 a year of assessed value. So my house was under-assessed before I bought it, but because I got a legitimate permit, my assessment went up like over 50% or something. I don't remember the math, but it was, it was a big chunk, and it was a bit of a shock. And, you know, I went from saving money for home repair into putting that money into my escrow account. my escrow account. So, if people improving their homes is going to trigger their assessment going up, that can be a barrier to people fixing up their homes. Can be a barrier to people, instead of doing the handyman special, getting legitimate contractors to do the work right. So, I'd be careful about how the permit process plays into things. And, you know, on that note, like, right before I bought a house, I went to a housing fair in Montpelier. I don't remember who organized it, and I think there was another one in Berry a couple years later. You know, I talked to some contractors there, some of whom are my wish list to call and catch up. Some of them I did end up using, but like, is that a low-cost thing Berry can do? Draw some contractors and help people do some repairs? I don't know if we can do another event like that. And one last thought is, in terms of housing needs, I've looked at, you know, should I fix up my own home? It's a little more than I thought I was getting into, and I've had some changes with family circumstances, and it would be great to be in a single-story or more accessible home for some of my family members I need to support. It is like impossible in central Vermont to find an affordable, accessible, or one-story house. So, I think a market that is just absolutely desperate is housing that people can age in, like, you know, and maybe some of the new developments will have that, but I would just keep accessibility in mind, whether that's building with goods, elevators, ramps, that kind of thing, because there's just, that's a huge shortage, and that would be something that would actually draw people in potentially.
There's so many, so many good thoughts, Amy. And I'm sorry you've had the experience of feeling like you were doing the right thing, pulling a permit, and then seeing your assessment bumped. And particularly if you think that, like, there are people out there who are not pulling permits and flying under the radar. I was struck when we had the substantial damage letter meeting, and one of the larger heating and plumbing businesses did not pull permits in the city, which suggested to me that they may think that there's no consequence if they don't. And that's why I'm glad the manager's working on strengthening our code enforcement, so it's level, fair, even, and there's a consequence when people do not follow our ordinances, because everybody deserves an even treatment and a fair shake. I think, yeah, a lot of good ideas. So, I have fixes multiple problems at the same time, like addressing utilities, looking at the vacant home list. I think the rates were going down a lot before the floods, but I bet they're back up now. And then on the revolving loan fund, I will say, you know, $250,000 is a start, but I don't think it's the end. My first home that I bought, I used a home renovation loan from a revolving loan fund. It was HUD money, so it was federal money, very complicated, much more complicated than any ARPA funds would be. I did $10,000 at the time. I replaced the electrical windows and did lead, some lead paint abatement. And it gave me a big leg up, and it made an investment in a home that was kind of teetering, teetering on the edge that I rented out as a landlord through grad school. And I think even though we, you know, even if we started with something small, and even if there are some administrative burdens, I think it does, could set the table for solving problems. And the Barrier Development Corp. has a revolving loan fund, and I believe the Downstreet Housing and Community Development has some revolving loan fund experience and background. And Angie, would you like to speak to that?
Yeah, I have a lot of time. All right. Yeah, so we operate several revolving loan funds for specific reasons, and we also operate them for specific municipalities. For instance, East Montpelier had a revolving loan fund that wasn't being utilized, and this year it's now housed with Downstreet. But we issue those funds to residents of East Montpelier, and we have some other sources. So, some or all of the administrative costs are actually covered outside of the money that's revolving. And then we can combine sources from different municipalities with other revolving loan funds that we have. So, we have a Green Mountain Home Repair Program, where we can do health and safety fixes to a home. So, we can combine those funds with, say, you've got something else that will fix other things that aren't eligible through our Green Mountain Home Repair Funds. So, all of that work can be done together as a single loan for the individual, but coming out of different loan funds and the administrative costs covered by the GMHR rather than Berry City's loan fund. So, I think there's some real synergy and some potential there, if that's the direction the city decides to go.
May I ask what type of projects, loan amounts are typical?
Our maximum loan amount right now is $20,000, which, in today's construction costs, and Tom's point, is not enough. And so, we're continuously running up against, like, we can't get the home all the way there with that limit. So, we have that limit on the GMHR, and we're able to comply, and I think that helps everybody.
Well, thanks for that.
So, could we specify certain projects that we would like to see funded? If we were to, we'd like to see ADU development, we'd like to see infill, and that would be a possibility?
Yeah, we could go through what you're looking for, and then we could market for those specific things. And then, you know, you're talking about ADU, we would probably start with VHEP, since that's state money that's coming in, let's use that if we can, if it makes sense for the person, because that has certain regs that go along with it. But could we combine the $50,000 that you get from the state with some money from Berry City?
So, that could have a real big impact on someone's ability to develop something? If you can combine those funds?
And, you know, with the VHEP, we've got a lot of folks doing sweat equity, so helping to defray the cost with their actual expertise, and that also applies to the GMHR loans as well.
I mean, you're right here. Granite City Apartments, I just haven't heard a lot about that lately. Start date, completion date?
Yeah, absolutely. And actually, Nicholas invited me today to talk about that, and I'm so thankful, actually, that you're having this conversation. I mean, I talk about housing all day, every day.
Me too.
And I know that you're not the only municipality grappling with these issues, so I appreciate that. And I very much appreciate the council's decision to invest in Granite City Apartments. I can say with 100% honesty, we would not have been able to move that project forward without that funding. We got down to, like, nitty-gritty, we cut the playground out at the last minute, we deferred developer fees, like, it is in many ways kind of bare bones, but it's happening, and it's only happening because of the investment that you made, so I do really appreciate that.
You deferred your development fees, too?
We had to defer fees, yeah. It just, it's, the market is so volatile right now. In all of the years that I've been developing, you know, you make your plan, you get your state and federal funding, and that's it. There is no extra money coming into the project, you figure it out. And that's no longer the case, because things just swing so dramatically. So, we did acquire the property in December, and we began construction in early January with a burst-water main that was super exciting, the way one should begin construction and rehab of a historic building. But it's underway. So, all the hazardous material abatement has been completed, I think, except for some work around the windows. We're uncovering all sorts of treasures. We found a map from, I wrote it down, early 1900s, empty olive jars from 1906 that were actually planted here in Berry City. So, Downstreet's annual meeting is April 29th. If you haven't received an invite, you will. It is also open to the public, and we will have some of the things that we have found at Granite City on display there. So, construction is going along, it's on schedule, and our current estimate is that we'll start leasing up in October of this year. So, it's moving, we'll have a groundbreaking, not a groundbreaking, we struggled with a groundbreaking, we will have a grand opening and a community celebration this summer or early fall.
What are you seeing, give or take, construction per square foot cost? Say, renovation and ground up?
I don't have the numbers in front of me, and the numbers that I combine are hard cost and soft cost, but we're seeing about $525,000 a unit on new construction. And that tends to be about the same as developing a single-family home. You know, an apartment, an apartment building with all of those systems isn't necessarily cheaper than the single-family home in development. And then renovations, around three is...
Three-ish, yeah, 300 square foot.
So, it's all soft and hard cost, everything.
Yeah. Ever seen anything like it?
I've never seen anything like it, and I've never seen costs go down, which is, I think, the really scary piece for all of us right now.
Exactly.
Like, development costs just kind of incrementally go up over time, and they're going up for some really good reasons, and people are getting paid more. That's excellent. We want to see, you know, labor being compensated in ways that make sense, but figuring out how we're going to fund this going forward is, it's a challenge.
And do turnkey operations that you were mentioning last week, does that reduce the cost?
Turnkey does reduce the cost for affordable housing development. So, there is, because we're using tax credit financing and other federal sources, there is a, there are requirements in the way that we develop. And with turnkey, because of when those sources enter into the project, some of those requirements aren't required, so it can be cheaper. It is definitely something we take very seriously and go into with a lot, a lot of planning, wanting to make sure, because when you're a turnkey developer, you sell us that building and you're done. And we want to make sure that we can operate something. We're developing perpetually affordable housing, so for the next 20 years, we're not having major systems issues. But there is some savings associated with that, and it's one of the reasons that we went in with DEW to the city's recent RFP. And I did ask Don, as he approached us, and I was just, can you do this faster? Like, Berry needs housing, and they need it now, and we have to go through kind of our, you know, our pipeline of when we can access funding, which is a slow process. And our pipeline is full, like, we don't need to pick up another project. And he just said, no. But they couldn't do it without the public subsidy either. And I think that's the situation that we're seeing for developers, definitely across our service area, which is all of Washington and most of Orange County, that even in areas like Waterbury or Montpelier, it is increasingly difficult to be able to get the rents for what it costs to develop housing, so, you know, affordable housing.
Thank you.
Yeah, and the crowd here tonight, these are all people who consistently are at the Housing Task Force meeting. Sam, oh my gosh, I'm blank, Michelle, yeah, Hebert.
You're handy with this.
Angie, all of your work on the Housing Task Force has just been really outstanding, so thank you all.
Well, I think very impressive what the Housing Task Force has accomplished in a really short period of time, that we had that conversation with funders, you need this, and then the Housing Task Force. I do, while I have the mic, wanted to touch real quick on shared equity housing. So, you mentioned reaching out to VHTB for shared equity. So, in your service area, that is Downstreet, so they're going to refer you back. And we did talk to VHTB about shared equity homes, and they're very much in support of developing something in Downstreet, or in Berry City. We have historically had a buyer-driven shared equity program, meaning that people come in, they qualify, and they go out and pick a home that they would like, and they purchase that home. We are seeing, I mean, escalating housing prices, becoming even not accessible for shared equity housing. And so, we are starting to look at development. In this last funding round, we were able to secure a purchase option on lots in Montpelier faster than we could in Berry. But we, you know, we have the vacant homes list, we're keeping an eye on your infill study, and are very interested in figuring out what development might look like. It is requiring subsidy right now. I mean, we're looking at, with Berry reasonable lot prices in Montpelier, and looking at three-bedroom, one-bath, 960 square foot, and they are net zero, and they're modular homes, and it's 420 a unit. So, we have to have the subsidy to make them affordable, or even to sell them for the appraised value. So, definitely a challenge, but we are super interested and would love to have those conversations about Berry as they're coming up.
And on the infill study, I understand there may be a rough pass that the Housing Task Force will be looking at, maybe in three weeks' time? Okay, I see some nodding. So, it'll be interesting to see where those potential opportunities are.
And we also, speaking of shared equity, we have three or four homes, actually, in Berry. We've rehabbed vacant homes and then sold them into the shared equity. So, as you're talking about your empty home issue, I want to address that. Keep us in mind.
Well, thank you so much, Angie.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Other ideas, other ways that are priorities in terms of what's going to be on a future agenda for decision?
I went to the Housing for All, which was a great, which I thought was a great training. It was so helpful to have that information. And I just think if we could be part of that cohort for small developers, that would be something that maybe would be easy for us to do and easier for us to pick up on. Is that possible? So, we'd have to identify another unused lot or parking place, and have to make a call for local developers to come forward and say, I want to do a three-unit, four-unit duplex. Is that how it would work?
Well, to be, I don't think there's going to be any cost to that training, but I think signaling, signaling the city's interest can hurt, and Sam was there, too.
I already have a lot of them, but...
Really?
I know.
Yeah. Cool. Anything else, like, among the ideas mentioned that were really, like, near-term priorities, something that you'd be interested in? I know the minimum housing standards ordinance, Councilwoman Lozen, is something that you've talked about in the past.
Yeah, and my thing, more resources to actually enforce, which ties back to what Nicholas has talked about in the past about code enforcement. You know, if we're going to do this thing, let's do it right. And we do have to allocate the remainder of the ARPA money by the end of this calendar year. And it sounds like Downstreet's willing to play ball on a revolving loan fund, or at least workshopping that idea a bit more. And I think that's definitely something worth looking into, and I'd encourage just to, because of the amount of remaining ARPA money, I'd encourage just to go to $500,000 as opposed to $250,000.
I just want to be Representative Anthony the Punch. He has been talking a lot about childcare needs in the city. And I'm just curious, perhaps for Angie, if, do you think there are any opportunities to integrate childcare in projects, and if that might leverage, like, let's say, like a ground-floor space in some way, or if you think that's even compatible with one of your sites?
So, it's definitely compatible. I've operated a lot of housing with childcare on the ground floors. I think it is difficult to fund right now, it's different funding sources and affordable housing development. We have a project going up in Berlin, breaking ground in May. That was a really...
Oh, I'm just going to note to ask you to come to the microphone. Sorry about that.
No, I apologize.
So, Angie was just saying that, yeah, childcare can be compatible with many affordable housing projects, so...
Yeah, I think it makes sense operationally. What's challenging is getting the funding to develop that, finding the operator, and making sure that they have the income to pay the rent, which often is paying off debt, et cetera, to use that space. And I was just going to say that we had a, we've got a 30-unit project in Berlin that's breaking ground this spring, and it was originally conceived with childcare in the basement, or on the first floor, and I think a lot of effort went into figuring out how that would work, and then they were unable to make it work. So, not impossible, but not the easiest path forward. But I would echo the need for childcare.
Representative Anthony, did you have any, did that cover the, address any concerns or questions or funding opportunities you're aware of?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And I understand the Berlin proposal simply did not work. And I do not know the details of whether it was because of the cash flow issue in terms of the occupancy, but I gather, and I'm surprised to hear, that an affordable housing project is that, how shall I say, undersubscribed, underfunded, undercapitalized, that it could not afford to give away or reduce the rent of a certain space, given that there's an intangible value to having childcare on site. So, I almost, I almost wonder whether it's really a problem of reconceptualizing what affordable housing should be compatible with. That is to say, the model. There's something wrong maybe with the model. I have had discussions both with Capstone and their Head Start people, and also Let's Grow Kids, which is a nonprofit which is purposely in the business of facilitating support services for families with children. So, and that's just the beginning of a conversation. I understand that the Berlin proposal or idea didn't pan out. I think it was a pioneering effect, and it may very well be that the... And it may very well be that the model of funding stacking simply was not suitable for that at the time. But I still think with the amount of new legislative money infused into capacity building in the childcare area, as well as the subsidies or incentives to raise the general salary level of childcare workers, I think that this is simply an emerging wedding of models that has to work itself out. I'm not willing to throw in the towel that a proposal that's maybe three or four years away in the city of Barry couldn't be tailored to accommodate onsite childcare, because it's certainly in short supply. Nobody argues about that. It really needs to grow. Thank you.
I agree completely. And I don't think it's an idea we need to give up on, just knowing that the path isn't necessarily super straightforward or easy.
Thanks for keeping that at the fore, Representative Anthony, and thank you, Angie. I see Stephen Restelli and then Sonia Spalding. Stephen?
Yes, I wondered, you know, when you look at the Wheelock Building on Main Street, there's a building next door to it. You talk about commercial blight. That building has been unoccupied for decades. And I'm not sure, I think it's one of Jeff Jacobs LLC's. The city of Barry consider having some sort of vacancy tax or, you know, like we have owner-occupied rates and non-owner-occupied rates. Shouldn't the city look at maybe taxing some of these blighted properties in a special way or check into the valuations? Another property that comes to mind, which has been under discussion, is Two Orchard Street. Two Orchard Street is considered a commercial building in the middle of a residential neighborhood. And when you look at the tax valuation, the property is assessed at 11,000 and the building at 29,000. But when you compare it to the other housing that would be, if there was a housing unit, it would be substantially more. So I think when you look at blight, and that's another blighted building that's falling in, that's actually bringing down probably the value of our neighborhood in terms of some of the shenanigans and the misuse that's been going on there with the traffic. But it's certainly undervalued in terms of what should be considered highest and best use. That should be taxed at least at the commercial rate at which it's in the middle of. I don't understand why the tax rate's so low.
Thanks for that, Stephen. And I think we're all, this council, I know every single one of us is very thankful that we have an assessor on staff now catching up with some of those issues. I think that the vacant tax is a good idea. I think, as I understand it, it's come down to some municipal authority issues under what's enabling in state statute. But if we can start by pinpointing what those are, then we could work on legislative advocacy for that and think about how to use taxing capacity to move some properties back into productive use.
Well, another property that comes to mind too is, you know, the loss of 16, right next to the post office there, I can't really think of the street there, Prospect Street. That warehouse burned down. That was assessed at $199,000. That's $199,000 loss. Is that off the tax roll?
Yeah. Yeah, we definitely got to get a handle on demolition. No doubt about that. And that was a structure fire, so there's that one. Sonia Spalding?
Thank you. I just have a quick question about the presentation and the proposal from Tom. Are those going to be shared with the public? Because while it was great to follow along and that you guys all had that, we don't have that at home. So is that going to be shared at some point?
Sure. Would you like a copy of it?
Well, I mean, in my experience as a school board member, we put everything in our package. And it would be helpful for members of the community who want to participate if you could include it as part of the packet.
Sure, can we include it in next week's packet, Nicholas? Sure, it'll be in next week's packet, Sonia.
Thank you. And Jake, was yours included as well?
No, it wasn't. So we can include that as well.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Well, this was a good discussion. And we've been here about an hour and 40 minutes. Shall we call it a night or any other thoughts?
Well, I did promise under two hours. So we could, by the time we do roundtable, I don't think there is an executive session.
I don't think there's roundtable. There's nothing else on the agenda.
On the agenda.
Motion to adjourn?
Well, just one last thing. No, it goes to the point of cost. You heard everyone, you heard Angie talk about cost. And like I said, there's no one in this room who would disagree with the statement, the biggest impediment to housing development right now is cost. It's the cost of it. Otherwise, people would be building everywhere. And they're not because they don't want to take the risk. And that's why I'm focusing on buying down that upfront cost. Because until we can figure out a program, and I hope it's unique to Barry City, because if we have that tool in our toolbox, doesn't mean you have to do it, just like property tax stabilization. I'd love to hear a property tax stabilization request. Guess what? Nobody's doing it because nobody's building, because the price of building is too high. So again, that is why I'm focusing on, and I've spent six months talking to developers, talking to even young couples who would like to buy a home. My daughter, who would like to buy a home and move back to Vermont. And she looks all the time and can't believe what has happened. She's only been gone from Vermont for four years. And she just can't believe the prices of homes in Vermont. So until, like I keep saying, sorry to sound like a broken record, but if we could figure out a way creatively and boldly to buy down the cost of building in Barry, it would give us an incredible advantage.
Michelle, did I see?
I was just going to say the other piece.
Oh, if you can come to the microphone?
I'd say the other piece just behind the cost is also tradespeople. I think that's a huge piece, just even for property owners, to be able to find somebody to help fix things. So, which is also cost, but just trying to even get somebody there is a struggle for a lot of people.
Sorry for blanking on your name. I got your postcard bragging on your sale of the property next to Nicholas. Good mailer. Councilman, did you have your hand raised?
No, I was just going to say she, Michelle, wanted to say something.
Okay, all right. Well, there's a motion to, thank you, Tom. There's a motion to adjourn?
Second.
There's a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. The motion carries. We're adjourned at 7:40. Thanks, everybody. Thanks, everybody.